There he is. Can you hear us, Jim? You're muted, I think. Does it show mute there? There, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay.
All right, Jim, Brian just started the police and fire committee and we're on item one. And Wyman's about to present it.
So, everybody has read, the resolution is presented. This is for Fire Station number nine. Do we have any discussion on this? If not, I don't know.
If the resolution passed, the council, the recommendation passed.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. That will be moved on, recommendation approved. The second on our agenda tonight on police and fire is a resolution accepting a grant and authorizing additional personnel. This is being presented by Chief Mike Peters and I believe this is for our resource officer.
Good evening. We, a few months ago, we had some conversations with our school district. There was a park and justice grant that was open for applying for positions. We, we applied for three.
Hold the mic up a little bit.
Is that better?
Yeah.
I apologize. We applied for three positions and we were approved for three. And, anyway, the ordinance... The ordinance says that we have nineteen, we actually have eighteen. We'll need to fix that if you want to move this forward. But, anyway, the grant is for three years. The salaries and benefits will be paid. We will have to purchase the equipment and things for the officers. We're not going to have to do any budget adjustments because the hiring process is going to be at the end of this year, the beginning of next year. We can split that up and we'll have the money in our budget to outfit the officers if we move forward.
And this is the same agreement with the school district that we've had previously?
Yes, there'll be no cost to us or them for salaries or benefits for three years. And at the end of the fourth year, the school is aware that they would be obligated to pick that salary and benefits off.
If the resolution passes. That is the resolution?
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second, twice. So, I'm pleased that we're going to move this forward.
I got a question.
You have a question, Professor Watson?
So, the grant makes the three officers for three years.
Yes.
School doesn't have to participate at all three years?
That's correct.
We have eighteen or how many do we have right now?
We have eighteen, per, per.
And the current arrangement with the school is?
They pay for ten months of salary and we pay for two. We use them in the summer times for all of our programs. And, like, right now, the school district has paid for their salaries, but we're using them to augment our shifts going into overtime.
And annual school is from home?
I'm sorry?
If they have school from home, like they have in March, April, and May, would school just continue to honor that agreement or?
They did, they did this year.
Yeah. They did.
Additionally, I should have added this, but this grant requires them to spend thirty hours a week in the school and ten hours a week doing community events.
So, if we don't have school, what happens?
Maybe four, forty hours a week for the first month.
We sort of only violating the grant if we're not having?
Well, what we would do is, we would put them over there when they're doing their meals. We would put them over there for any activities. I think that would meet the grant requirement.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, moving this forward, the recommendation approved, say aye. All opposed, say no. It will move forward.
Thank you.
I will close out the fire and police committee and send it over to Mike Lawson.
All right, we've got one item on the agenda tonight, Department of Parks and Rec. And it's a resolution authorized in the creation of a new position. And for the senior center, and if the floor is here, if you want to discuss the order.
And we were able to secure a grant for, to add a position for a grant writer, fundraiser, to help us do, like, all our social media and our print advertising and all of that. And so, I've talked to several other departments and so what we want to do with the position is utilize whoever, for the senior center first. And then, we'd like to share with other departments so that if, I talked to Chad today and he said he could totally utilize it. It's, you know, we want to buy somebody that totally specializes in grant writing. There's so many out there, but they are so time consuming that, you know, we don't have time to do the senior center daily activities and all of that, plus write a grant. So, and let alone the fundraising that we do. And so, and, you know, this year with COVID, we're really going to be hurting, but there's a lot of speeding grants out there. But with everything that we're doing now, we just don't have the time to apply. But we have the money to cover the position for the rest of this year and benefits and all that.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hey, Lori, I don't have my notepad in front of me, so I don't know if it's on or not. But you've got a grant for the rest of this year?
Yeah, it'll cover all of this year through December, right, Wyman?
Any more questions?
Well, the person's going to raise enough money that they're going to cover their salary.
Is COVID, that's what it is?
Yes, and it will work. I mean, there's tons of big grants out there that we can't even touch. I mean, I did a Tyson grant, it's so time consuming because, I mean, you get emails, I mean, it took fifteen emails back and forth. But then doing the daily senior center activities and trying to, you know, take care of all that, meals on wheels, transportation and all that. We just don't have the time to devote to it. But, I mean, it's a much needed position. And, I mean, I think that we've talked to other departments that could totally utilize the person also.
So, basically, the position is grant, grant writer?
Well, grant writer, fundraiser, I mean, we do a lot of fundraisers. I mean, like, you know, we do our, we do a five K in the spring, we do a motorcycle bumper run, we do bluegrass shows and all of that. But, I mean, I could, you know, you can spend all your time doing, you can spend your time, you know, doing the senior center part. So, it's just, it's too much for one person.
I think it'd be interesting to see, I mean, you definitely need a grant writer and we, we do and we've discussed as a city, we need one. I mean, we've, we've had, we've contracted with people to write grants before and been successful. But we, you know, obviously, we pay them a percentage then of the grant. But it'd be interesting to see how much, we want them to help, I mean, this is me speaking, if this passes, want them to help the senior center. But it'd be interesting to see how many, how much they're able to help some other departments.
I think there's probably lots of park and rec grants that we're...
Yeah.
I talked to Chad about it today and that's what he said, he's like me, there's a lot to fly for, but, you know, that's not our specialty is doing things.
Right.
And so, that's what, you know, he said that he could really utilize it also.
Mayor, did we go through a deal before I got the council board? Would Chamber or somebody in the school district, when they didn't came out as a grant writer that we were all supposed to share or?
Yeah, Jim, but that, we used that up and really, we did use her, it was Heather, oh, I've lost Heather's last name for a minute. But anyway, she, she actually worked for us then to help secure the Rabbitfoot Grant that was recently, Rabbitfoot Lodge Grant that we recently received. That we'll be talking more about later here in the next week or two. But Heather Walker Clark is her name and she did a great job. But, you know, she, we had, we had a contract with her. But you're right, the Chamber contracted with her on some Department of Transportation grants, federal grants.
But Jim, is this a temporary, is this any...
Yeah, that was just a, that was just a temporary situation.
And I'm going to say that when for the senior center that we use with a person and it don't work out, I guess we can always dissolve the position.
Right.
We, we had an intern this year for the first time and they helped us with our poker run. But because they could get out in the community more so than us being tied down, you know, I could run for an hour or so. But, you know, I mean, I just sent them out to the community eight hours, you know, go get whatever. And, I mean, we raised an extra ten thousand and I know it's because of that intern's effort because they devoted their entire time to that. You know, that we've never raised in the past.
So, what happens if the position is then approved for next year's budget? Then we just, it, because I'm not sure that we're going to see, you know, exactly how, you know, positive the position would be in a few months' time. I think it's going to take longer than that. So, what happens if we approve it for this year's budget and then we decide later that it's not what we thought it was or we want to change it or add to it even? Then we have to wait until the next year's budget, is that how that works?
No, we could, we could put it, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be starting to work on next year's budget pretty soon. And I would assume that, that, I don't know, we'll, we'll know more after, after this person gets started and is hired to get started. But I, I would expect that the position will probably be in my proposed budget for 2021.
Okay. So, what I'm saying is...
But if, if it does, go ahead.
The three, so the person will be hired for these next three months or six, I mean, six months, wait, seven days, John. Five, six months. And by that point, will we be able to see that we need to put it on for next year's budget? I was wondering, I don't, I just don't know if that's enough time or do we go ahead and put, put it on the budget and then wait a whole another year to see?
Well, that'll, that'll be up for y'all, yeah.
Between is what I'm saying.
That'll be up for y'all to decide, y'all will have to decide that when you do your budget meetings. We'll have, we'll have at least some track record, but you may be right, we may not have enough to...
I think that we will have some results by December, for sure.
You think so, like, okay, okay, that's good. That works for me. As long as I can see something and then before we add it on the budget.
Right.
I'm just saying, no, that was enough time.
We've got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion or questions from the board?
I have one question, Mike.
Go ahead.
Is this thirty-five thousand dollars?
Can you use your mic?
I'm sorry.
So, Jim.
I'm sorry, you're right. Is the thirty-five thousand an annual salary? Will that be at the end of the day if this is a budget position for next year?
Is that, is that the annual salary that we're talking about?
No.
No, that's, it's...
As the grant, that will cover this for this...
It's a thirty-five thousand dollar grant. So, do we have a, do we have an annual salary? Do we have a rated position yet?
She'll zone here, grade eighteen. On a resolution.
I mean, I couldn't hear where you said it.
He says, he's showing that ninety-six, whatever that means, and you have to look at the text scale and understand what that, how much that is. So, I think, Lord, we need a better explanation of that probably at the council meeting.
We can, we can give you an annual salary for what the position will cost at the council meeting.
See, I think that we were talking with Gina, that what she said would be, is that the thirty, that they, it was that thirty-four, three, eight, eight, I think. So, that would be their yearly salary, but then we needed another ten thousand for benefits. So, then, but right now, so from now...
So, you're going to have some of the grant left for next year too?
So, whenever we hire whoever we choose, then that will cover their salary and their benefits this year, July through December.
And it sounds like a little more?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does say here in the resolution, the grant coordinator, ready to play classification of grade eighteen, and they're starting salary at thirty-four, eight, eight, eight.
Yeah, eight, eight, yeah, eight, eight. That was the salary and then the benefits on top of that.
So, some of that will carry over into 2021. So, it'll offset some of 2021's cost if we fund the position for, for next year's budget.
That was my question.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you, Lord, we'll move that forward, recommendation approved.
Thank you.
I'll close, Parks and Rec, and turn it over to Rick Evans.
We have one item on the line, Street CIP. It's a resolution accepting a year-long grant for construction and security purpose. Who knows, maybe we'll land it on our annual one.
Use miles home to do the street construction because it's so much that I have to coordinate with building, construction of this building. And it's about time for them to start a break in the parking lot and everything. So, we wanted to go in and do the, the car take price, not take seat for the road value. They don't do it in phases and they're here to answer any questions on the construction, keep my head. I think we're putting some drawings in the Dropbox, they might all be in three phases.
I don't see any drawings, Wyman. I see all the, I see the quantities and everything and the unit prices.
You don't see the drawing?
I don't.
I don't see it.
I don't do it.
Wyman, because Rick was asking, how does that number of the budget we talked out?
The police committee, me.
The numbers we had on this were so old, I don't have any records, I don't have any records of where it came from. And I knew grossly hundred, and we were looking at about seven hundred thousand. I knew that it was way under, but it had any magnitude, the guy, Lord, he didn't have to do it.
So, the total amount we're looking at tonight for the deadhead to the entire project, all three bases?
The drawing is in the Dropbox, it's not in, I, I go to PDF expert and it was a different, so it's in Dropbox under Spring Street. Modified nine hours ago.
This is about double the parking that we've got in front of the building.
So, it's primarily just parking?
No, it widens the street.
Street and...
Yeah, 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 it's street parking.
If we keep parking on across...
Oh, okay, that's good.
I have a parking number seven, I have to tell you.
So, this money comes from?
Out of the street line.
Out of the street line.
Can we find it?
Sure.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't put in as, as the same. With the agenda, because we had it later.
Please, this is the ordinance.
What's the resolution?
If the resolution passed, or council, recommendation passed.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Take it from this week. With that, we'll... Call it, CIP, we need community...
My missus has a regular report now, maybe on COVID-19 financial issues update.
Good evening. I hope we got another extender for this thing.
Who's Kobe, man?
We wanted to update you on a few things. We'll get to CIP in just a minute. That just came off the printer a few hours ago, so we will get that into your Dropbox. As you're probably aware, the city of Springdale had a great month for April. There's two month delays in reporting, so in June we completed the numbers. We brought in one point four three four million in the one percent sales tax collected. That was twenty-three percent higher than the projection of our friends in the Arkansas Economic Development Institute projections. So, we have decided we might just scrap those. Just ask Wyman what he thinks we're going to bring in because he's an exact person we've got. So, as we saw, other cities have double digit decline, Springdale held strong and had over eight percent over this period last year. And for the entire year, we're still up over eight percent as well on average. One thing of note, in the NAI CS codes, which is North American Industry Classification System, there was a dip in restaurant sales, which I think everybody was anticipating. We averaged one hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars so far this year per month. In this month of June, April, reporting in June was ninety-four thousand five hundred sixty-three. So, that's a twenty-four thousand dollar decline in restaurant sales tax collection. However, we were still up in our general merchandise stores, our Walmarts, our Sam's, and also especially in building material and supplies. The average is one hundred seventy-six thousand, we were up over two hundred and eight thousand. So, those are really the highlights that I noted. Animal slaughtering was down, we had beef shortage, so that's probably what affected that. We averaged sixty-three eight, we had forty-two five sales tax generated, that hit very...
I think internet sales were up too.
Internet sales were up. The average has been ninety-seven thousand. You know, we started collecting that last summer and we've been averaging ninety-seven thousand, we had one hundred seventeen thousand reported. So, now that really only shows...
Same number?
That was for the month of, of June, we had one hundred seventeen thousand, but on average, we're doing ninety-seven thousand. Which, you know, that's twenty thousand dollar difference, but that's also two percent of whatever that total is. So, that's a pretty significant swing. So, those are the raw sales tax numbers.
Hey, hey, does the county share a county sales tax, and how that work?
Washington County, let's see. Washington County, we collected one point one two seven million. That was down point seven one percent.
So, basically, because of county, even though we had better...
Yeah, Mayor Jordan, Mayor Jordan has already thanked us for helping, for helping pull them up. Yeah, because they were down eleven something and, and so their, their, their county share didn't suffer as badly because ours brought it up.
And Bitville, or Bit County, Rogers, I believe it's eighteen or nineteen percent, nineteen percent did.
Bitville sixteen, and their county, yeah, and their county was down too.
So, that, that took our percentage for Bit County down eleven percent, which is about fifteen thousand dollars. We don't get a whole lot of the Bit County sales tax. When we take all that information, we can see what our CIP numbers are going to be. This is the one that you'll see in the Dropbox this week. We added three hundred ninety-two thousand forty-four dollars to our CIP account, which is pretty significant. That's going to bump up our unreserved CIP to one point seven two nine million. And as we've stated before, that, that is also including the, the two million dollars that are being transferred to the general fund that we do every year. It's already accounted for out of that money. So, we, we're still up at four point seven two million dollars. One of the reasons you'll see for the past three months, our bond that we refinanced, the two thousand twelve bond, when we refinance, the savings is going to show up in your CIP, which you're reading every month. So, that's why we're seeing three hundred thirty, three hundred eighty-nine, three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, as opposed to just under two hundred thousand in previous year.
So, sales taxes out, but we're also paying less on the bond service?
Right, that was, we were scheduled to say about a million dollars a year for the first round.
So, Wyman, I asked you to give me a copy of this, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I thought we sold on disbursements. It shows the million dollars being transferred, does, does that mean that was transferred in June? Because I thought we already made drinks or, or at least part of it.
That million is not a dated number, it's a total.
It's a total, okay.
We, we had five hundred thousand that previously had been...
We're doing it quarterly.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
And so, we just took another five hundred from unreserved, which must add to a million.
Okay, you might, you might mention, Kobe, where we're, I mean, without, without getting hopes up too much. Where we're sitting right now, at, I think we're with additional revenue, with revenue above projections and expenditures below projections, we're sitting about two point, is it two point seven to the good?
Well, in your, in your files there, this was put in the Dropbox, you have the monthly financial reports. Year to day, accumulative budget, you'll see that basically what the mayor's saying is we're up two point four eight one million, or what we expected. So, total revenue, the cumulative budget was two, twelve point nine four million, we've actually brought in thirteen point seven nine. So, we're up eight hundred fifty thousand dollars on our revenue. And then our expenditures were down, year to day, one point six three one million. So, total, we're two point four eight one million to the good this year. So, that's, I mean, that's about as good.
So, maybe we won't be transferring?
That was the point, yeah, yeah. Of course, you know, we got another half a year, but if, it's tracking pretty good right now.
It is. You know, we've, we've never had a year over sixteen million dollars in our two percent sales tax. We've never hit sixteen million. If we continue to see what we've done this year, we might surpass seventeen million. Now, I don't know that that's likely, but it is a possibility. So, for sure, we're looking at probably over sixteen million dollars. Even if we, even if we did have the four percent loss through the next six months, as was projected by the Arkansas Economic Development Institute, we still won't have to use any of our CIP. We won't touch any of our four million reserves we're sitting with.
So, I have one more question, a little disbursement, if you don't mind. Spring Street Buildings, I don't understand this line, uh, Spring Street Buildings Proceeds dash real five north Main Street. Is that the museum level?
No, that's going to be these houses here across from the new building to the west. We, when we sold those buildings on Spring Street, we kind of decided we want to use that same money for the, to use on this project over here, the green space, the parking and things.
Okay, so we actually spent some of it?
We did.
Right, that's what, that's what we've been using to buy those buildings and tear them down.
Okay.
We also used part of it to buy this little piece... We also used part of it to buy this little piece of property over here, Wyman, from Triple T Foods, or whatever it was. Uh, there was a small piece over there that they still had that we needed for parking, and we also used that million dollars to get that.
We still have 18,000. I'm sorry, you'll see. Thank you. So that covers everything I had, are there any other questions?
Uh, okay, Jeff, if there's not, we've got, uh, while we're talking about COVID, you all know, uh, the governor, uh, amended his order Friday that, and, and the league worked on a, an, a sample ordinance that would still fall within the governor's, uh, order. Um, you've got, I think you've got that before you, and, uh, hopefully you've had a chance to read through it. Um, and obviously, it's going to be your decision what to do with that. I, I, there's no, uh, personally, I don't think it does much, but that's just my opinion. Uh, but we also wanted to bring you a resolution that I think the league prepared a few weeks ago. The resolution, uh, asks, just, it basically, it strongly, uh, encourages businesses to require masks and for our residents to wear them, uh, when in public. So we wanted you to have that too. Uh, and then our, at our special meeting, special council meeting right after this, we're going to ask you to approve more grant money to, uh, to purchase another 100,000 masks. Those meant quickly, we've got just a few thousand left, just under 10,000 left.
How many did we start off with?
100,000. We, we gave away almost 90,000 in two four-hour days.
Are they blocks to groups, or were they to individuals?
No, most of them were, 82,000 of them were to people who drove through and got them.
How many were given per individual?
We were given, they're in packages of 10, and we would give a package for each member of the household.
Mayor, actually, uh, the shipment when they came in, they weren't in 10s anymore, that was what they originally planned.
Oh, okay, okay.
So what they were doing was asking people, how many do you need in your house?
Okay, okay.
So they would give them based on that.
So, but it wasn't businesses, it was primarily for households?
It was, yeah, I don't, I was up there off and on, and I don't remember seeing any businesses. Uh, primarily, it was just families that were very appreciative, uh, loved their kids living on the, you know, teenagerage. So we just kind of, it was kind of an honor system, you know, what do you need, and do what, and put that up in.
As you all remember, when we, we, you know, we had this special council meeting last week to approve that, last Friday, and, uh, or week ago Friday. And, uh, you know, our, our, our number one goal was to get them in the hands of people who, who may be safe at work, but maybe their families aren't safe at home, you know, and, 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 uh, and while shopping. So we hope it accomplishes a lot of things, but they went so fast that, uh, I think it would be a good idea, regardless of whether you do a resolution, or this ordinance, or, or neither, uh, I think it'd be a great idea. But anyway, that, that was, that's for the, the meeting afterward. We needed to go ahead and call a meeting because it would require an ordinance to waive competitive bidding, and we didn't want to wait, we didn't want to call you back for another special meeting, so we thought we would do it tonight, uh, to see what you want to do. But, but while we're in Jeff's committee on the COVID-related stuff, uh, you've got a, you've got an ordinance to consider and a resolu-, or a resolution, or, or neither. Uh, and we, I just, I just felt like since the governor, uh, made his, uh, his amendment, that, uh, it didn't necessarily change anything I think is right to do, but, but we do need to, I mean, we definitely need to discuss it now, because, uh, I think people would expect us to. Uh, so, so if any of you have any thoughts, or that's, or how do you want to handle it, Jeff?
I would like to strongly urge our, our residents and our businesses to acquist and acquire that. I just, uh, um, if our businesses need us to back them up in that, they would have the ordinance. I would hope that they would, and I hope we can deal with the resolution, but I just think we need to be simple.
How many, uh, how many cities besides Springdale has gone out and acquired grant money and passed out masks?
I don't have an answer for that. Fayetteville, Fayetteville has, I don't know if they're using grant money, they may be using city funds. But they did that, I think, as part of their, as part of their ordinance they passed. But, uh, because they have police handing them out in stores. Uh, I'm not suggesting we go that route. I don't know, I don't know, Brian, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't presume to say there's nobody else, but I don't know of anybody else besides, besides that.
And since this has been going on, I can remember pretty much everybody on this council, including our mayor, encouraging people to follow the guidelines presented, uh, CDC, Arkansas Department, all, all this stuff. And then, uh, you know, Fayetteville came along and did their deal, and kind of started this up.
Which, by the way, still doesn't, it still doesn't go, fall within the, the governor's ordinance, suggested ordinance. No, because they have a penalty.
And so, the way the governor has, has stayed it, and, you know, he's saying that he has worked with the municipal league, and they have written an ordinance, and they have written a resolution also. There is, when you have an ordinance, you have a mechanism of enforcing it. There is no mechanism in place to enforce an ordinance. And when we look at this, I like to look at numbers, and I read the paper Sunday, and, uh, it said that we had, since March, we had 23,209 people in Arkansas supposedly get the coronavirus. Well, our population is around 3 million, so that's 0.77%, not even 0.1%. And then I looked at Washington County, because the paper gave some numbers for Washington County, and it said we had 3,932 cases. Of that, 2,790 have recovered, which is 71%. Active cases, we have 1,142. So active cases, that's 0.47%. And we are encouraging our residents, I have gotten phone calls, I have gotten emails, and I have talked to several people and explained to them what, uh, the council has done with providing masks. They were really excited about that. I explained to them, they said, well, why don't you do something the way Fayetteville did? I said, well, because if a business, the way we see it, the way I see it, if a business, whether it's an eatery, or a shopping mall, or any place of business, if they require a mask to come into their business, then we, as consumers, should abide by what they're requiring. Have no problem with that, I don't think we need an ordinance to, to state that. I'm very pleased that we have been given out masks, and I'm very pleased that grant money has come and afforded us to be able to do it again. I am pleased to know that it is grant money that Springdale residents are not paying for with the tax money. But I don't, I don't think the numbers add up to what the governor has said. I don't know who is advising him, I don't agree with him. But I do believe that we need to continue to let people know that they need to abide by the guidance. If people want to wear a mask, fine, hygiene is more important to me than a mask. Keep your hands clean, keep your face clean, that's where it is. You wear a mask all day long, you're breathing in and out inside that mask. So I am not in favor of an ordinance, and I am not in favor of a resolution based off of the physical numbers that, that I have in front of me.
I happen to agree with Brian, I do. I don't think you can enforce an ordinance and a resolution. I think this council and the cities have done an amazing job of trying to encourage people to, um, act responsibly and cautiously, you know, wear a mask if you feel safer.
Absolutely.
Uh, wash your hands, social distance, stay out of large groups. Uh, and I think that's about as much as we can do, uh, as far as an ordinance or resolution, I'm not even that good.
I, I agree with both of you on the resolution. Of course, I don't get to vote on it anyway, or on the, I agree with both of you on the ordinance. I, I, I see the resolution as really kind of no harm. It really goes along with what the chamber's been trying to do and encouraging businesses to. Because I've, I've told people that, that felt like we should have a mask ordinance, look, go to the... Any business right now can do that. Any business right now, any private business can require masks. And I would, I support them if they do, and I, I think it's a good idea. But I just don't believe it's our place to do that. And then, and then consumers have the right, if, if there's a business they normally frequent that doesn't require masks, and they believe they should, then they should tell the business that, or go to a different business. And that's, I, I just, I just think, and, and we've taken the extra step, and will continue, I think, to try and get masks in the hands of people, uh, that need them. And we're, there's nothing we've done that would discourage anyone from wearing a mask. We encourage people to do that, and we encourage businesses, I do, to, to require it. Uh, that's all the resolution does in my mind, if, if y'all, uh, you know, could, feel like you could support the resolution. But anyway, that's my two cents. But I definitely agree on the ordinance, that this ordinance, and, and the governor, you know, to his credit, I mean...
I, I, I agree with Brian, and... Ellen?
Yeah, we can hear you, go ahead, Amelia.
Uh, oh, this is my, my, and I just wanted to, I did have five emails that were, uh, not in favor of any bans toward mask-wearing, um, or the dessert, or, um, or resolutions. I did have one email that was for it, um, so I wanted to pass that along. But I, I agree with what Kathy is saying, and with what Brian is saying, and, um, I don't think we need to jump the gun right now. I don't think that, uh, resolution isn't something that we can't come back to later. Um, but I think, until we need to bring out big guns, I think that we just, um, hold off and, and do as we're, we're currently doing, and continue that education, and continue that, um, providing, um, of materials.
Okay, well, I, I get that, but just to be clear on my thoughts, now, I, I, I don't know if you're able to look at it, but the resolution doesn't require anything, just to be clear.
Mayor, we need to check this back for the decision.
Right, then, but what, what is the point of that? Do you, uh, and this is my asking, do you think that if we put a resolution out there that does nothing, do you think that's going to prevent, or key, or, for, you know, persuade someone to wear masks when they normally wouldn't, or perhaps that?
I don't know, we, I, you know, I don't know how much good, a lot of our resolutions do that we, that we pass, but, uh...
Right.
But I think it, you know, it just, it just, if, if the council agrees with it and passes it, at least, at least it lets people know that we believe it's important that they wear masks, and we believe that it's important that businesses ask people to do it.
I will say, I think that, some, I'm sorry, it's delayed, so I can't hear very well, but, um, I also think though that, um, I just forgot where I was going with that. I'm, I'm sorry, I do a plane. But, but I just, I just don't think that there's any reason to jump the gun if, um, if it's not necessary, and I just don't feel like it's necessary currently. Now, that doesn't mean that later on I would support something like that, but if it were to brought, brought to council next week, I would be a, a hard no on those.
Well, my thing, Mayor, is the public knows, residents of Springdale know, that we encourage this. And there's no, we could, we could say a resolution 100 times, that we encourage people to wear masks, that we encourage our businesses, if that's what you require in your business. 100 resolutions is not going to change anything. Our, our stance is still the same, we encourage the people to do that. And, uh, I, I don't know what else, how else we can say, unless we all get quoted in the paper, each one of us saying, yes, we sup-, we want the people to understand that we want you to abide by the guidelines, you know, by the CDC, you know, by the Arkansas Department, you know, we support that.
Something I think, Brian, about a resolution though, is the fact that it would be in the paper that Springdale City Council plans that people ought to be wearing their masks, okay? And as you said, it's not a law, it's not, you know, it's just, it's just an encouragement, that's all it is. And if we got COVID, that design, uh, not sure if we will get COVID that way. So I, but I would like to encourage people of Springdale to wear their masks, learn about the COVID.
Something, something else, and this is just, I'll just throw this in because this, uh, I, I, I think just as a reminder, anything any one of us say, uh, carries no weight. It's what this does, what this collective does as a body that actually, uh, states whatever the council wants to state. That's where, you know, if, if, if you have a, if you have a vote, and it's a, and it's a, a 5-3 vote, it doesn't matter what the 3 said, the council has spoken. And so that's, that's where I just, uh, wanted to be sure and put that out there. I think it's important for the council to speak from time to time, and we've done that with other resolutions. We've done it, for one, encouraging the, the county to, uh, to build a jail, to pass a tax to build a jail. We've, we've done it many times, resolutions that are non-binding, that just state a, a desire of the council as a body. Uh, now, and, and if it's, if it's not there, well, it's not there, you know, and I'm not, I'm not arguing, uh, you know...
Of course, we, we can't really bring this up right now until we're doing the special meeting, you know, again.
Do what, Jim?
We can't really bring this up, the, the resolution or, or this right now, because we're not in a special meeting, you know?
Well, we're, we're discussing this as part of committee. You could either, if you chose to do one of these, you could forward it to, to council next week, or you could forward it to the special meeting tonight. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend doing the ordinance that way, but if you wanted to pass the resolution, you could.
Well...
Well, first of all, just because I think this council, I thought, and I'm a pillar of this, is again, that we think they should be wearing these masks, but we don't want to try to make it a law or anything. I'd like to recommend this resolution going for the council, where we're placing the masks.
So we have a motion, uh, by Mr. Reed, the, the, the resolution, the, I think everyone's got a copy of that resolution.
I'm going to hear you.
I second it, Jim.
I would like to, I would like to table this so that we could all read this resolution. And if we want to reword it the way that we feel like we want to reword it, this was written by the municipal league, I'm assuming? And, uh, we may want to reword it a different way, we just got it tonight, and so I'd like to table this until, we can all have time to look at this and discuss it, or...
Well, you've got a motion, yeah.
So, you got a motion and a second, but what happens, Taylor, do you know?
Jim would have to withdraw his motion, or withdraw the second.
I, I withdraw the second, although the condition that we're tabling it to the next committee.
I can handle that.
All right, so we got a, we need a full.
You need to vote on that.
Motion to table.
So I'll make a motion that we table this to the next formal committee meeting. And we'll.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table the resolution, at least consideration of that resolution encouraging the use of masks for further review at the next committee meeting. Any further discussion? All those in the table, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed?
Jeff, if it's okay, I'd suggest that if you're interested, if, if you're just no on the resolution, no matter what, you would need to do this, but if you're interested in, in making some changes, as Brian suggested, look over this and get, get it to earnest and let's work through it or, and then we can talk about, we'll have something more to talk about at committee next time if anybody wants to move forward with it.
Mayor, do you also have a consideration of payment?
We do. We added this today. I checked with the chairman and he said that was okay. We have a, a resolution, hopefully you've got a copy of that. As you know, with any payment, any invoice over a million dollars, we've got to get council approval and this would, we, we got this this morning and so, so we've added it to the agenda tonight under finance, a resolution authorizing payment of an invoice. This is again, this is one point four million dollars, one point four seven six for the, to be paid out of the criminal justice bond.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds to forward the resolution for payment of the invoice to council for recommendation for approval and for the discussion of this. All those in the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you.
As a, as a milestone.
Yes.
If somebody don't care, you don't tell them that he do an invoice over a million dollars.
Do what?
Don't do an invoice over a million dollars.
Yeah, okay, that might work. Yeah, I'll try that.
If anything, it says how many you go, you can give a vote.
Mayor, could I ask one more question before we move on? What is the status of criminal justice coverage? I know COVID has affected supplies, so where are we in that?
Uh, I really don't think they're much off schedule. They've been able to do other work. The holdup.
We have a tree down.
Yeah, we got a tree down. The holdup is, Kathy, what you're referencing, I think, is the, the tilt up concrete, the concrete panels.
No, I'm just telling you about the project.
Well, those were, those were delayed several months, but they've been, they've been able to work around that and do more work inside. We're supposed to start getting those in August now. I really, as far as their overall timeline, Wyman, I don't know.